This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Alpena City Council Meeting of December 21st, 2020. Call the order, please.
Councilwoman Hess here.
Mayor Potam Johnson.
Johnson here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Mitchell here.
Councilman Noak.
Councilman Noak here.
Mayor Walagora.
Mayor Walagora is here. We'll rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next up is the approval of the agenda. I'll entertain a motion for that.
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Johnson, second.
Hess, yes.
Mayor Potam Johnson.
Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak.
Councilman Noak, yes.
And Mayor Walagora.
Mayor, yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, any modifications to the agenda this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on. Approval of the minutes for regular and closed sessions of December 7th, 2020. Anyone note any issues, changes?
No.
Okay, citizens appearing before council on agenda, non-agenda items are allowed five minutes each to address your concerns. This is the only time during tonight's meeting that you're allowed to address council. If anyone has a concern or something they'd like to bring up, put a raised hand in your chat box. Steven IT, do you have anything there?
I show no one.
Yeah, give everybody just a minute if you'd like to unmute and address, no. All right, thank you, we'll move on. Next up is the consent agenda. A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $1,298,548. B is a council appointment of Griffin Sadler to the Recreation Advisory Board for a three-year term expiring on December 1st, 2023. And C is a budget amendment request to increase the supply account within the general fund for COVID-19 related expenses.
I move we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Johnson, second. Yes, Johnson.
Councilman Mitchell.
Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak.
Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora.
Mayor, yes.
And Councilwoman Hess.
Hess, yes.
Motion carried.
Next up, we have presentations. First up is the citywide pride program. Kathy Himes from our human resources director is here to present that.
Good evening, everyone, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. So in December of each year, the mayor presents the individuals with the highest number of citywide pride slips with their certificates. Obviously, it's looking much different this year, but it is for a job of a well-done job, and they are given four hours of personal time to be used before the end of the fiscal year. So today's presentation does look a little different since we're meeting virtually, and the employees were not able to attend this council meeting in person. So on your screen, on your screen, you will have pictures of the employees who were selected from this group. And so I will leave it up to Matt now to make those introductions.
All right, thank you, Kathy. So just as a precursor, I've also got a brief description here. It says, since January 2000, coworkers, citizens, and visitors have been given the opportunity to recognize city employees for going the extra mile. Employees receive citywide pride slips indicating their act of kindness, dedication, hard work, or going above and beyond the expectations of their typical workday. That's kind of how that works. So this year, there are eight awards to be presented. DPW technician, Tim Korn. Administrative assistant for police and fire, Tracy Marquardt. Fire command, Mike Sanders. Fire paramedic, Chris Morrison. Police command, Eric Hamp. Police patrol, Lenessa Melberg. And for the administrative team, there was a tie between the engineering assistant, Shannon Smolinski, and human resources director, Kathy Hines. So congratulations to all recipients. It has been a tough year, and employees deserve recognition for working through 2020 with courage and dignity. All employees of the city persevered through extremely difficult times this year. So thank you all very much. Wish you could be, well, not necessarily in my office, but in city hall so we could shake your hands and get a photo. But there it is on your screen. So thanks again.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Kathy. Okay, next up is the introduction of our building inspector and our administrative assistant, Andrea Kears. Our planning and development director is here for that.
There we go, I was waiting for my camera to turn on. Yes, so we have a new administrative assistant, Kathleen Zoeve. She would like to maybe wave a little bit and say hello.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
So Kathleen will be taking the place of Patty. And then we have a new building inspector, Billy Foyt. So he will be, I would say, taking the on-spot, but Mike will be the new building department head. And then Billy will be taking over the responsibilities currently done by Mike. You want to say hello, Billy?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Billy?
Yeah, looking forward to getting them trained up. They've been great assets so far.
All right, awesome, and welcome aboard to both Kathleen and Billy. Looking forward to working with you and the public in the future. All right, let's see, no announcements or proclamations, so we're going down to unfinished business. This is the farmer's market lease of Michigan's warming shelter. I think Rich Selinger is here for that. Rich?
Yeah, good evening. Just wanted to bring council up to date. I'd hope to have something formal back to them for this meeting, but that proved to not be the case. I've had some internal discussions, you know, going back and looking at what services we provided back in 2010, the last time it was rented, and what we have available now. Working with Sean McNamara out of our DPW to try to get some items worked out. So once we get that done, we'll be getting with the farmer's market group to get that, their portion ironed out. And I hope to have this back. My target is the second meeting in January to bring this back to council.
All right, thanks, Rich. And that, just looking up the date of that really quick, because Anna's gonna want us to put a date on that, is going to be, your recommendation is going to be the 19th of January? So I would, does that sound good?
Yeah.
Okay, so entertain a motion to post, is it postpone this topic until the meeting on January 19th, 2021?
Johnson, I move we postpone the meeting until January 19th, 2021.
That's all support.
Matt, just as a, Monday would be the 18th of January.
Yeah, but that's Martin Luther King Jr. Day, and so we don't, you guys work, but we don't hold meetings. I'm sorry.
It's one of those holidays that don't show up on my calendar, sorry.
Okay. Thanks for that point, though, Rich. Go ahead, Anna.
So I just want to clarify, Cindy, in your motion, you said that you wanted to postpone the meeting.
Postpone the discussion.
There you go, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, yep, gotcha. Okay, Councilman Mitchell.
Yes.
Councilman Noak.
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagora.
Mayor, hi.
Councilwoman Hess.
Hess, yes.
Mayor Potam Johnson.
Mayor Potam Johnson, yes.
Motion carried.
All right, thank you, Anna and Rich. Next up is new business. The first one is the nature fine art slash craft event at Duck Park on June 26th, 27th, 2021. And our city manager is going to present that.
Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. So a large art and craft show at Duck Park on June 25th through the 27th, 2021, was received from Blue Ribbon Events on November 2nd, 2020. The application was then circulated to city staff for evaluation and comment, and a request came back from the fire department for Blue Ribbon to submit a site plan. In response, the site plan for the event was submitted to the city on December 1st, and that site plan was circulated again to staff for further evaluation and comment. I've included those staff comments from fire, police, and the building departments, along with comments from the wildlife sanctuary board attached to the memo. Given the issues with parking and safety identified at Duck Park, it is my recommendation that if this event is approved, the event be hosted at Bayview Park. I did consider Michigan's park, however, there is a conflict there with the farmer's market event on that requested Saturday. There are art fairs hosted on the water and other communities, along with art in the bay here in Alpena. And wind issues can be mitigated with proper anchoring of tents and displays. According to building code, even a temporary structure must be secured firmly to the ground to resist winds up to 90 miles per hour. In addition, promotional signage may be placed at the event sites only on the days of the event. It is also recommended that the organizer provide private security for the event. And I've included information for your discussion with my memo. And also, I believe Danielle Lynch is here online. She is the organizer with Blue Ribbon Events, and she could answer any questions that come up on her end.
All right, thank you, and welcome, Danielle. I think, so it looks like from the comments, from the comments from staff, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that this is probably the major issue here is parking and the pedestrian traffic across US 23. There at that intersection of Johnson and 23, so it's probably, correct me if I'm wrong, the biggest concerns or the only concerns about the the site. I did have a couple of different, there were three different numbers as far as vendors go, and I don't know that that's really too much of an issue other than the size of the park and the parking. It went from 50 to 60 to 70, depending on where you read in the application and the description. I'm gonna probably assume that it's gonna be 60, because that's what the layout, the site layout shows. Danielle, I guess before I ask council if they have any other issues, my question to you is, what is your response to the fact that that parking lot only holds 50 vehicles? And there is no on-street parking anywhere there in that area?
Okay, so to back up about numbers. So for my policy for 2021, I actually have, I mean, I have two seasons, Florida and Michigan. I have probably 25 in Michigan for summer of next year. I'm in the middle of my Florida season right now, so I've done probably, I think this is my 26th event since COVID, all safely social distancing. So the number discrepancies that you're seeing is, my in-house policy is, for 2021, I am not accepting any more than 75 vendors at any one of my events, period. It doesn't matter where it is. So that's that high number that you're seeing. I'm anticipating 50 for your event there. However, on the map, to be on the safe side, we factored in, I believe, 62, just in case we had more. That way, we didn't have to go back in and change the map after. It's easier to take these spaces out than to add them back in once you've had an agreement from the city councils. So that's the number issue, first of all. Then on the parking issue, so a little bit different than your other art shows that you've had there. What really sets me apart and the reason why my business has expanded for artists so much in the last two years is I do boutique fine art shows. So I really don't have crafty granny or tea cozies or crochet towels or anything like that. My artist installations can be as high as $7,500, a single piece that they're selling. So it is a little bit different than your regular average art and craft shows that are in Michigan. Mine are definitely of a little more of a higher standard as far as art goes. So parking normally, and what we're seeing even historically after this weekend, because I just had an event this weekend in Florida here, in Lover's Key at the State Park, was I had no more than 200 people on the footprint, including my artists, at any point during that show over two days. That is kind of the way that we market it and advertise it. We're just not, I'm not looking for 20,000. It's not the way that we do our events. My artists interact a lot more on a one-on-one basis with the patrons that come to support them. So when we did come in, you know, I'm actually driving, I'm in the car, I apologize with the bouncing of my head. But I actually have been to that park numerous times and have gone to the other parks on multiple occasions as well, living up there for part of the year. So with Duck Park, with the 50 parking spots, if you break it down with like normal just dynamic math, normally, nobody's coming alone in a vehicle. My artists are not going to be parking on location. We will actually be having them park at an off-site location during the event so that they are not utilizing any of those parking spots. We're really not, my events are not set up where we're looking for 5,000 cars are gonna be coming. It would be great, but that's just not the world that we live in right now with COVID going on, and it's not the way that we have set up our shows or feature them with patrons, if that makes sense to you. So normally, with 50 parking spots, normally, you're gonna have at least two to three people in a car. That gives us about 60 people at least, all the way up to 150, if every car has three people in it, coming in. That stays within our parameters of what we have been getting for the last nine months at our shows. So historically, for us, over the last 26 events, we, other than my Escoto events, which have a massive amount of parking around there, we've never been over our numbers on an event, even during peak season last year with the governors mandated 100 per outdoor limit or whatever. We never went over those numbers. So hence why we were looking for Duck Park. I try to create venues and art locations that are of a different nature. Bayview Park is very nice, don't get me wrong, but you have events that have gone on in there, and I personally, as an art show promoter, don't want to be affiliated with those events, because then I take on all the baggage that has gone on with those in past years. That's why I look for totally different venues. On your other two parks that you have, again, beautiful parks, I love all the improvements that you guys have recently made out there. The major concern is a wind issue. And I, again, these are very professional artists. They all have at least 40 pounds of weight per leg. They have their proper stakes and things so that they can maneuver everything down. But when you're selling $3,500 to $7,500, single pieces of art, and that wind starts kicking up, that's a whole lot of panic for an artist to have to worry about 20 large pieces getting damaged. So that's a concern that I have to think about with the Bayview and the other parks that you have there.
Um, thank you, Danielle. I guess, I think my only other question to you would be, because the parking lot, because the parking lot only has one exit and entrance, that's why I'm gonna ask this question. Would you be opposed if, if accepted, if your site is accepted by council, would you be opposed to having someone able to put a sign at the entrance saying parking full or parking available? So people are coming in, because there's no other way out, but to come in and then have to turn around and go back out if there aren't any spots? So is that something that you ordinarily do anyhow, or?
Well, we don't, I normally don't have to on my other locations, because we have so much parking. Most of them, we have ample acreage right near us. So I have no problem doing that. We also, if we deem that the atron numbers get too high on location, we shut our gateways down. So, and we don't allow people to come in until we feel that there's better traffic flow, so we don't have to worry about going over our numbers. Again, thankfully, with last season in Michigan, you know, it was a slow start for people coming up. But we, again, other than my Escoto events, we never went over any numbers that we projected. And again, Escoto, you know, we had massive turnout for those events there, a little bit purposeful for you. But we have ample parking there, so I didn't have to have those concerns quite the same degree. The other concerns with, I believe, when I spoke to your fire department guy, was if people were parking across the road. So, you know, again, I try not to, when I come into an area with a city or a state or municipality, I personally don't want to put any strain on your municipality services. So I provide my own insurance, I provide my own security. We bring in restroom facilities and everything. So even if you had restroom facilities there, we don't want you having to change your restroom facilities, you know, three times an hour to keep up with what additional personnel that we are bringing into your event. So if we, you know, if parking is the major concern, I think maybe between shuttles or other things, we can tackle that obstacle. Again, it's just with your other parks. Your city manager can tell you, I reached out last year and it just didn't go where it needed to go fast enough, which is why I started the ball rolling so early this year. I think Alpena is really, really prime with the growth that's going on there to have a fine art invitational and a plein air event there. You have the people coming from all over to visit their cabins that have that extra discretionary income. And you're, you know, you've got the breweries, you've got the restaurants, you have the wineries and everything. You just need some of those other extra components to change that dynamic in the city as well. So that's why we're looking to bring it to your town as well for this year. I believe your town is my only town that I'm adding, because all of the other towns that I worked with last year have opted to have us back again this year.
Okay, thank you, Danielle, and I'm gonna give, I'm gonna give the rest of council an opportunity to either ask you questions or comment. We'll start with Mayor Potam Johnson.
Me. I have, I have a concern with parking, but I also have a concern with safety on that corner. Traffic moves at a pretty good clip. There's no buffer, and you're gonna have people gawking, not paying attention with the added activity on that corner. And I'm not sure, from my perspective, it becomes not only parking, but a safety issue. Those are my biggest concerns. And that spot.
All right, thank you. Where am I at? Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, nope, Cindy addressed the issues that I had, sir. Those were things that I was concerned about, too, just with the activity and the traffic flow in that area, just a little bit heavy, I think. Might be a little bit distracting. You know, I have a tendency to think that, we've seen that in the past, but we've also had that same issue when we do the flag display there as well. So, I mean, those can be something that we have to consider as well. That's all I have.
All right, Councilwoman Hess?
Hi. First, I want to say it gets exciting that another art show is looking at coming to the community, because I think it could be a benefit. And I personally think the Duck Park idea would be a nice change. I understand the concerns about traffic at the intersection, because it is a busy intersection. However, we, we know people have weddings there, which people's eyes are drawn to that, the flags are there. There's going to be events there, there's going to be people. It's the people on the road responsibility to pay attention to the car in front of them. With Danielle's answers regarding controlling traffic, being open to making sure that there are options, maybe shuttles perhaps, to get people there from other lots, so they are not crossing the intersection as often. I think that I would be open to that, considering the thought and planning, looking at putting into it.
Thank you, and Councilman Mitchell?
Yes, the only concern that I have is the other individual citizens wishing to utilize the Duck Park, which would normally be parking over there, utilizing the boat launch for the kayak canoes, it's like this. And there would not be any parking for the citizens of the city to be able to utilize the Duck Park parking lot. So that's the reason I was more likely to go towards the Bayview than Duck Park. That's all I have.
We didn't really address the other, the other uses of the park, I guess. I'll tell you, I'll give you my take on everyone's comments, and then we can go back around if someone has other, other comments, such as mine. Danny brings up a good point. The park is used pretty regularly. But at the same time, I guess my response to that would be, any, any park that had something else going on, some other event going on, at the same time, you're kind of limited to, to some parking and whether you, you know, have the ability to drop off your kayak or anything. We might even, we might even be able to to take a look and discuss that, I guess, as far as whether somebody would be able to, I mean, access to the, access to the island and access to the, to the launches will be the same as always. There aren't, there isn't a boat launch there, but you are correct, sir, that there is a kayak launch there, so. But I guess I really didn't give that a lot of thought, only because there, almost any park, I guess, would have a limitation on what you can do while somebody else is doing their, their event. As far as the, as far as the intersection goes, I'm, I'm not overly concerned with it. To be honest with you, it's an intersection. It's designed for people to walk or ride bikes. Our bike path goes right through there. There's a walk symbol there for pedestrians. There, pretty much everything you need to get across the, across there is, is there. And, and I certainly, I can't control what goes on anywhere, anywhere in the city as far as what people are gonna gawk at and get into an accident or, or something else. That's, that's really up to, that's really up to everybody else to be safe at all times when they're driving or walking. So I really, I don't have an issue with it. I completely understand where Danielle's coming from as far as wanting to separate from, from our, what I'll just call, you know, what we would normally see as a, at a craft shows at other, other venues. And if she wants to have it there, I really, honestly, I have no issue whatsoever. A couple of concerns, but they're just concerns. I don't, she's chosen the spot. I don't see any really, any real reason why I would, why I would deny her access to the park for that, for that purpose. So that's where I'm at. And I don't know if anybody else has follow-up. I think what I'll do is just kind of leave it open to somebody that wants to chime in. I won't bother going all the way back around.
Mayor? We have Andy Marza, who is our community risk reduction officer, and he did the site plan review. And I'm wondering if he has anything to add to the discussion?
Hello, Andy Marza, Community Risk Reduction. Yeah, this came to my desk, and I took it upon myself to walk those sites. And it's, most of it's a police matter-type activities, is parking. Matt, like you said, that is a busy intersection. It worries me, people turning left out of that, out of that parking lot. You know, if this is where she wants it, and you guys are okay with it, maybe a right-hand turn, sign only? So you turn right out of there? What we were thinking, when I talked to Chief Jett and Lieutenant Hamp, where people are gonna be using that, that's June 26th, 27th. That's a busy weekend, and people could possibly be parking across 23 there in the hospital parking lots and coming across. So that was our, the biggest worry. You know, when, when you look at the layout, it's spacious, it is, got room. But people crossing the road and people pulling out, that was our biggest concerns.
Right, and Andy, I completely understand your concerns. There again, I respect what, what you guys have to say and what your concerns are, but at the same time, there are, there are driving laws and there are pedestrian laws then, and, and people are, people are accountable to follow those, whether it's a busy weekend or a crowd or not a crowd, and there's only eight people at the park, I guess. I'm just, I don't see it as a, you know, I don't see it as like when the football stadium lets out and everybody leaves at the same time, and we put our patrol guys out there to make sure that, you know, people are safe and there's lights going and things. But this, I just, I honestly don't see that, that many people just lined constantly the whole time that it's open. I certainly hope it's I, I certainly hope it's super popular for, for the vendors that are there, but I'm just not so sure that, that it's, that I, that I should be part of denying their, their request to use the park just based on something that might happen. I guess that's, that's just kind of where I'm at.
But I appreciate it. Whoops, I'm sorry. Mayor Protem Johnson. I would feel more comfortable with this spot if a couple of things happened. If they shuttle people to it, instead of trying to shuffle traffic in and out of that spot. With the exception of maybe the people that are coming to use the kayak launch or, or go onto the island. I still have a concern with traffic that shuffles above that section. And I know there are traffic laws, I get that, but, you know, if everyone obeyed the traffic laws, we wouldn't have accidents. And that's simply not the case. But trying to shuffle cars in and out of that lot, and my hope is, it is a busy event. It's gonna be a new event, there'll be a lot of people who will be interested to see what's, what it's all about. So, I think that there will be a lot of people shuffled in and out of it. If we could do something to mitigate traffic coming in and out of there and causing even more traffic around that corner, I would feel more comfortable about it. My two cents.
I think it's Councilman Noak, I think, you know, from my perspective, I kind of agree with you, Matt, it is a new event. And, you know, I, I think that being in a different location does kind of make sense. I really like Andy's suggestion of a right turn only out of that park. If we could do something with that, that would make me more comfortable in that particular area as well. And I do like the fact that the Blue Ribbon is willing to work and shuttle people. I'm sure there could be signage up there that says additional parking over here, catch or shuttle back. And, you know, I just think for a new event, I'm at least willing to try with those suggestions. And if we have a lot of issues, we can always address it, you know, if they're successful in their second year. So, I, I don't have a problem with it being there. Those, those two suggestions, I probably would, would make those happen, I think those are great, thank you Andy.
I guess, as far as the shuttle goes, I mean, that would be something that Danielle would have to, there's a few things that, I don't know if you can mandate people to take a shuttle to a location that they want to go to, it's a city park. And to provide one would probably be a great, a, a great asset. Danielle even mentioned that she entertained that thought, and I'll leave that up to her. I mean, you have to, now you actually, you have to get permission from somewhere, from somebody to allow, you know, parking, shuttle parking from their private parking lot, whether, whether it be the hospital, the hotel, or the church that's nearby, or something like that. Shuttle's a good idea, I don't think that we can make it mandatory that people that are attending it can't park. And, and, you know, if there's, if they pull up in the parking lot, it's only got four cars in it. There really shouldn't be any reason why they shouldn't be able to park there. And I'll, I, as far as the right turn thing goes, I mean, I'll, I'll leave that up to, to the, to the people that know that kind of thing best, which would be the police department, I suppose. Somebody comes out and they want, and they're, and they're headed west, you know, where are they gonna go? They're gonna come out and take a right and then have to go somewhere to turn around to go, to go back. But, but anyhow, I guess, I guess as far as the logistics of a right turn only, I would leave that up to, to the police department if they think that that's a good idea, or if they think it'll flow better if we just let people do what they're, what they're already supposed to do, excuse me. And any, anyone else? Questions or comments?
I'd find it to comment as far as, again, with the traffic concerns, you know, it is, is a wider road, for example, than State Street, and the, where Bayview parked, Bayview parked at art shows for many years. And there's, right in the lots close to there, there's probably around 50 spots. And there is street parking, but with the street parking, you have a lot of traffic on the street and pedestrians getting out in the road. In this case, you're not getting, having pedestrians getting out in the road. We may have a little more traffic circling to find a spot, you actually have less people in traffic. And at the intersection, there are, was actually a push button, I know people could walk or bike themselves in a while, but there's actually a button to push to make that, you know, intersection crosswalk work correctly. So, like I said, it's, events are going to bring people, that's kind of the idea. And I think we just work with that, and that's my thoughts on that.
No, I just want to apologize really quick, because I lost you guys for about 30 seconds when I drove through something here. But, if I need to put a sign up to have a only turning one way, that's not a problem. As you can see from the site plan, I've specially created safe social distancing signs, so that's not an issue to put whatever signage I need up to reinforce that. You know, the parking, again, thank you, because I was gonna bring up with Bayview, you have just about the same amount of parking spots around Bayview as well, that you do for Duck Park. However, they can park downtown, she said, and walk through. Whereas this is kind of its own separate off, off-site event specifically for that venue right there. So I do appreciate that, you know, aspect. Anything that we can do to alleviate the traffic, I can work with y'all with. I mean, you know, it's, I run a very, very tight ship. The cities that work with me know that, you know, I stick to plans, I have very good insurance and security. I don't, I just don't have issues arise, thankfully, at my events, because we do make sure that we take care of all the logistics, so that everything runs smoothly. So, you know, if we need to look at the possibility of maybe on peak hours, having a police officer out there. But, you know, historically, everybody's saying that the last weekend in June is super busy. It's busy, but let's be honest, it's not super busy, because it's still not peak season. That's why I chose that week. I did try to stress you guys in July, when you already have an event at Bayview and you already have other events going on in the city that are gonna have people. I specifically chose a week where you don't have any events going on, so that we didn't have to worry about that extra stress that was going on on the city.
Okay, thank you Danielle, and it sounds like you're certainly willing to, to work with, with some of the suggestions that were made. So, if there's no further discussion or questions for her, I would entertain a motion on the topic.
Councilman Noak, I move we approve the Blue Ribbon Event Art Fair at Duck Park on June 25th through the 27th.
Councilwoman Hess, second?
Did you say June 25th?
I think that's what the memo said, right? 25th through the 27th?
26th and 27th.
26th.
26th and 27th.
The print's small, and I'm old, so.
The last weekend.
No, actually, it does say June 25th through the 27th.
It does, okay, thanks Danny.
25th would be a loaded day.
Sorry.
25th is a set up day.
Yeah.
Yes, Noak, yes.
Mayor Walagura?
Mayor, I?
Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Mayor Protem Johnson, yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Motion carried.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much Danielle. Please continue to stay in contact with our public safety, and we will move on. Next up is the Alpena County Ambulance Service Contract, Chief Forbush.
Yes, good evening. Excuse me. The Alpena County Board of Commissioners has approved a new agreement with the city to continue providing advanced life support ambulance service for 1,700 square miles of Alpena County, including Alpena Township. Our department has provided service countywide for over 40 years. The new agreement has a term of four years, consistent with the ambulance mileage, and increases the annual payment from 766,000 to 941,000, or 940,000 rather, or 1 mil, whichever is lower. That represents a 22.7% increase and aligns the cost of the ambulance service with 1 mil, as it was originally intended to be in the 1980 original mileage. The county will also provide up to $200,000 every other year to purchase, for capital purchase of ambulance vehicles, reimburse hospital drug box fees and the cost of disposable supplies, including those exchanged with first responders, up to a cap of $15,000 a year. Currently, we budget $60,000 a year in disposable supplies for the entire operation. Contractually, the city will maintain at least three ELS ambulances staffed and available for immediate dispatch, and the fourth for use by call-in personnel. In fact, we actually own seven ambulances, or have seven ambulances, and frequently, we're retiring one here shortly, so soon we'll have six, and frequently deploy four, five, and six simultaneously as needed. The city will also continue to provide EMS continuing education for area medical first responders, something we've done for a number of years, and will conduct initial medical first responder or EMT education programs, at least biannually, so that the first responder forces throughout the county are properly staffed with trained personnel. I would like to note that our firefighter paramedics responded over 4,500 calls last year and continue to serve the citizens of Alpena County with compassion and excellence. Kudos to them, and thank the commissioners for their continued confidence and support. We're recommending to mayor and council that the city approves this new agreement. We think it's a fair agreement to both sides, and it will allow a little bit of growth, as we have seen in Runville. Any questions?
No questions, Chief, just a quick kind of thanking you for the, thank you and all the men for all the service over those years, and we appreciate you putting all the numbers together for us, and, and of course, to the citizens of Alpena County and having confidence in this, so, thank you again.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
Thank you, Mike. You're welcome, sir.
Any, anyone have any questions or concerns about the contract for chief?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to, because we need to approve that contract, am I correct?
Mayor Protem Johnson, I move that we approve the contract with the county for ambulance service.
Councilman Noak, support.
Is that me? I didn't hear.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, I?
Okay. Councilwoman Hess?
Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson?
Mayor Protem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
And Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Alright, next up is the bowfishing tournament to be held in 2021. Nate Blurry was having trouble logging on, is Nate, are you, are you on? Okay, he had sent me a brief message, right, as the meeting was starting, that he wasn't able to get on with any kind of sound or, or camera. So what I'll do is, I have his, I have his memo in front of me, as everyone does, so I'll just read it to get it into record and for the sake of our guests. So it says, "In partnership with the Thunder Bay River Center, I am in the process, in the process of organizing a bowfishing tournament as a fundraiser for the center to be held in the spring of 2021. We are now at a point where we are requesting a waiver or amendment to the city's ordinance regarding the discharge of bows in the city limits prior to moving forward. We have solicited advice and guidance from the DNR and Fisheries Division of the Michigan DNR, as well as other regional cities that have successfully allowed bowfishing." Below is an email from Judy Kelmanak, who I might add is with us on the meeting tonight, of the, from the Thunder Bay River Center, from Dave Borgeson from the Fisheries Division, with our responses to his considerations, inserted in parentheses. So the, so the email starts out, Judy, "You have recently approached the Department of Natural Resources to weigh in on our, on the possibility of holding a bowfishing tournament for carp in Alpena." Fisheries Division of the, of the DNR continually seeks to increase recreational fishing opportunities for the people of the state of Michigan. Common carp are one of the state's underutilized species from a recreational fishery perspective, and therefore offer a chance to increase angling opportunities without greatly impacting the existing fishery. It continues, "Bowfishing for carp has been a popular activity for many of our state's anglers, and tournaments throughout the state have been held targeting carp." Some considerations when organizing a bowfishing tournament for carp are, one is time of year and, and location, are carp plentiful enough to produce an attractive fishery? So the, Nate's response to that would be that there, there would not be a date set at this time, because carp spawn when the temperature is correct, so it's, there's a short window. Our plan is a one-day event to be held on the Thunder Bay River from Bagley Bridge to the George Washington Bridge. Our assessment is that carp are plentiful enough, if not more so. The second consideration was safety, are site conditions safe at the time and location of the event? Nate's response was, "All participants must follow DNR requirements for bowfishing, and we have reached out to Tawa City, Escoda, Sheboygan, and Traverse City, all of which successfully allow bowfishing, and they have had no reported safety issues. Arrows are attached to the, to a reel on the bow with a heavy line, and the trajectory is angled down towards the water." And the third consideration was disposition of harvested fish. Will fish be utilized? How will they be dealt with? For example, sometimes tournament fish have been used for fertilizer by low, fertilizer by local farmers. And Nate's response was that we have several options to both provide the fish for consumption or disposal for food fertilizer. And that again was from Dave Borgeson. And then Nate's memo can resumes. "We have attached letters of support from the Alpena Wildlife Sanctuary Board, Thunder Bay River Center Board, and the Alpena Mount Morinsey Conservation District for your review. The Thunder Bay River Center Board, and I feel that this tournament would be a safe way to expose Alpena, and specifically the watershed to individuals from out of town, decrease the population of invasive carp, introduce the sport to those who haven't been, and of course, raise some money for the river center. Therefore, we respectfully request a waiver or, or an amendment to the city's ordinance regarding discharge of bows in the city limits for our tournament. I welcome any concerns or questions." And without Nate, perhaps Judy might be able to, because she's working very closely with, with him. And then attached were letters from, of support from the river center, this Wildlife Sanctuary Board, and Mount Morinsey Conservation District, whose primary purpose of the letter was basically to justify that carp are, there's definitely seems to be an abundance of carp in the watershed. So, so that's, that was Nate's presentation, I guess, just a quick follow-up from my perspective of, of bowfishing. It's been brought up to council once before, it's probably maybe a couple of years ago. And I, I continue to have no issue with bowfishing, it's, it's, in my opinion, it's almost just as safe as, as, as regular angler fishing, because you're shooting straight down into the water, so. But this request is specifically for that tournament at that location, for that amount of time. And I guess at some point, I'll look to Bill Pfeifer as far as, as far as the ordinance and what, what possibilities we have there in the event that, that there's some agreement here. So, so I guess my biggest concern would be to Bill, and I'll just wait and let him chime in, maybe once everybody else has, has kind of given their impression of the, of the project. So, I'll start with, as usual, with Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem Johnson, I have no issue with the event, to waive it for that, for this particular event.
Okay, thank you, next is Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, this is, it's funny, I have absolutely no issues with this event. And I remember back when the bowfishing first came to council, and I did have some concerns. And, you know, over the years, I've tried to really dig in and learn a little bit more about the sport. And it actually is quite safe, it's, it's, it's quite, getting quite popular and stuff, so. So I have absolutely no concerns here at all to allow that within, you know, for this tournament, for sure.
Thank you. Councilwoman Hess?
Hi, I'm Councilwoman Hess. I have no issues with that. I think it's exciting that we're looking at having another formal fishing tournament. It was in this case within the city, but in our area, we're growing and growing and being known for having, for our great fisheries. And I think it's one of our great assets. So I'm in support of this and perhaps down the road looking at amending it. So it's not only just on a one-time basis, considering it, it is its own sport. But yes, I support the waiver for this.
Thank you, Amber. And Councilman Mitchell?
I have no problems at all with it. I do have one question. Since I'm the Vice President of the River Center, should I be looking at abstaining from the vote?
Could you be? I, I missed it. I missed the question. I'm not sure Judy heard it.
I said, "As Vice President of the River Center, should I be looking at abstaining from the vote?"
Oh, uh, no, I don't believe so. I'll leave that question to Bill Pfeifer.
Okay.
Um, Bill? I don't believe he needs abstaining.
Sounds good to me.
I guess, I guess I'll, I thank you for pointing that out, Danny. The only other question I had for Nate at the time, and it's not in his write-up, it was, it was a conversation we had afterwards was the question came up as to whether that would impede this tournament would have any issue with the regular use of the river in that area during the tournament. And he said, "Absolutely not." It would, it wouldn't be any different than if they were of regular fishing. So if people are kayaking and doing, doing everything they normally do on the river, there wouldn't be any, any reason for them not to be able to enjoy. So that was, that was really my only question to him at the time. So Judy, it looks like you get off lucky. No one, no one had any questions for you. I would like.
I do one question. I know the exact date can't be set because it depends on water temperature. But is there a ballpark? I, maybe I missed, I just, I can't scroll down on that screen. Is there a ballpark time that this would be held the year?
Oh, May.
May, okay. All right.
May.
All right. We just want to make sure it wasn't June twenty-fifth to the twenty-seventh, because we've been on our show.
That's a very good, that's a very good point. Very good point. Thank you. Yeah. And, and ordinarily, May would be before. A lot of people are probably using the river because the water temperatures aren't super warm anyhow, but a very good question. And then I'll take it to Bill Pfeifer as far as I had an opportunity to, to look over that portion of our, of our ordinance that addresses bows.
I have. We could, we'd have to bring it back for a vote on that particular ordinance that would just allow a one-time exception. We'd do that as we got closer to the date. Hopefully, we can establish to date, you know, at least a few weeks prior to the actual event. But we could relax that restriction just in that area, just for people participating in this tournament.
Okay, all right. I was, I wonder, I wondered if we could actually do that. So that's, that sounds like a good plan.
If I may, I, I would just say they could, once they have the details of the event, send it through to the clerk's office through our normal review process. And we can certainly bring it back to council if there's a vote needed.
Yeah, that, yep, that, that sounds good. And like, like Nate put in the beginning of his letter, and I'm sure Judy probably shares some of the same concern was that, was that they, they wanted to be assured at this point before they, before they do any more planning. They wanted to be assured that they would be able to do this. So, so I would like to, to, to perhaps solidify that to a point where they can go ahead and start making their plans. And then, of course, and then, of course, come back when we, when we need, when we know when the date is so we can, so we can adjust the ordinance. But, you know, perhaps I'll just leave it to Bill to, to maybe suggest a, a motion now. Is there a motion now that we can kind of assure them that they're going to have the ability to do this later? I don't know how that works. Or just knowing that they have our support. I don't know.
Yeah, I thought they were looking for a motion now that would allow them to have the event. I mean, similar to, like the noise ordinance, we routinely on request have basically accepted the noise ordinance for certain events regarding, oh, the, the most common one would be somebody has a band past ten o'clock. I know Chiefs had a few events in the street there where they wanted a noise ordinance for certain events. So we could do specifically vote on the noise, specifically vote on the exception to the bow ordinance once we got closer and knew what the exact date was.
All right, that makes sense. I will relay the city manager's comment to Mr. Blurry after the meeting, and then he'll, he'll bring it back for, for that normal, the way we normally see it for ordinance changes as, as Bill Pfeifer has identified. If that sounds reasonable? Awesome. All right. Anna, do you need anything?
I don't think so. I think I'm good.
Okay, excellent. Then we will move, move on. Thank you. Thank you for being here, Judy. Appreciate that. Next up is the North Second Avenue and Miller Street intersection. Steve Schultz is here for that.
Good evening. Can anybody hear me?
Yeah.
Great, all right. Um, back in January, engineering staff presented a plan to reactivate the traffic light at the corner of Miller and North Second Avenue. Function as a standard signal with pedestrian crossing lights from six forty-five AM to three thirty PM. This was in an effort to make the intersection a safer crossing point for both pedestrians and traffic. At that time, council directed staff to look at some other options that might accomplish the same concept while still maintaining flow along Second Avenue. We looked at various options. We also obtained some pricing from Thunder Bay Electric to modify the existing signal. And we also investigated some of the long-term plans for Second Avenue. We do have improvements planned for Second Avenue from Fletcher to Huber Street in the, the next few years in the capital improvements plan over the course of two or three years. And the overall impact to the neighborhood and traffic flow in and around Second Avenue will be a major issue. One way to alleviate this would be to maintain a few intersections open and keep them open during the construction to allow traffic to flow northerly and southerly across Second Avenue. Most likely cross-street options would be Fletcher Street, Miller Street, and Huber Street. With Huber and Fletcher Street being at the termini of the project, there's advantages to reconstructing Second Avenue and Miller Street intersection in advance of the other work slated for Second Avenue. To that end, engineering staff has prepared a cost estimate to reconstruct, reconstruct the intersection and of new utilities out from underneath the intersection, which were connected to the future utilities planned for Second Avenue. Thunder Bay Electric provided a cost estimate to install a loop detection system, which would allow Second Avenue to remain green unless vehicles are present and waiting on the Miller side street. The light would then go into a normal sequence and allow the traffic on the side street to clear and return to green once complete. Pedestrians would have push buttons that would also activate the normal sequence of the light, allowing them to cross safely with signal and then return to full-time green on Second Avenue. This work is estimated at twenty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-two dollars. The cost breakdown to reconstruct the entire intersection, replace the utilities, and prepare them for future connections is as follows. For the street itself would be a hundred and eighty-two thousand six hundred and fifty dollars. The sewer would be seventeen thousand five hundred, and the water would be forty-seven thousand four fifty. Our total project cost to reconstruct the intersection and implement the traffic control upgrades is thus estimated at two hundred and seventy-six thousand three hundred and eighty-two dollars. For future long-range planning ahead for Second Avenue project and the improvements to the traffic control at this intersection, I would recommend that we proceed forward with this project. We have a hundred thousand dollars in CIP for intersection improvements. We can also redirect some funding from some other projects to, to accomplish this, this project. One of the, the things we had talked about too is that, as a, as a timeline, I think we would look at bidding this thing, you know, into the late winter or early spring. Once, once contractors know what their prices are going to be for the year, but I don't think we would get under any, any sort of construction until summertime. So that intersection is not closed during the school year.
Okay, thank you, Steve. This has been a, that intersection's been a topic a few times. My, um, I, I've got a couple of questions for you as far as the future repairs to Second Avenue. Will they? Let's just say we're going to do the whole project, the whole plan for Second Avenue repair. Let's say we're discussing that. Do all of, with the exception of the, of this street signal that Thunder Bay Electric quoted, are all of these other improvements sewer, water, street repair for that intersection? Or is that part of the project? Or are we just resurfacing that street?
No, that's, that'd be part of the project. What we're doing is digging down. And the, the, the project overall would be to replace all the utilities down there. We've got some, some older, older utilities down there that, that need to get done, and that is in the, in the CIP. And so that's what this project would be. We'd be digging right down to utilities and then repaving the intersection in concrete.
Okay. My biggest issue is, is, is the, is the traffic signal itself. And, and we've, we've talked about this at our meetings before. I'm just not in favor of a traffic signal being there. I, I'm, I, I completely agree that the traffic signal as it's running right now is confusing to a lot of people. I've had people stop in front of me that are going straight through the yellow and yellow flashing light, and they literally just stop, not knowing what to do. And then there's somebody waiting on Miller and they're waiting for them to go, knowing that they have a yellow. So I, I think it is confusing, the flashing system that we have right now. I'm just not sure if, if it warrants that much work. I've always been in favor of just, of just eliminating the light completely and just putting stop signs at the, at the Miller, on the Miller approaches. So people know you have to stop, just like any other intersection on that entire, on that entire road. My, one of my issues with, with the signal like this at an intersection like that is that you get, you get other than when school lets out or, or when services left out, let out on Sunday, you have a sporadic car, one or two cars at a time coming up off of Miller Street to that intersection to take a right onto Second and go downtown. And they're going to trigger the light. And by the time the light sick cycles to turn green for them, they're already had gone on a, taken a right on red. I just, it just, I agree with those type of systems and other really super busy intersections like Home Depot, for instance, and places like that. But this one, I just don't see that it gets the use that necessitates putting, putting such a lavish system in when we've got other intersections in town that could probably use something like that. But that's just my, that's my opinion. I'd rather save the cost and just have people stop. People know what to do when they stop. But I'll open it up to, to further discussion as well. So start again with Mayor Protem.
Mayor Protem Johnson, I tend to agree with the mayor on this. I think it's an expensive proposition that we didn't plan for. And I know that the project is in the CIP. I understand that, but the money isn't there right now. We would have to take it from other places. I don't like the idea of the light doing different things at different times of the day and, and cycling. I, I, I just, to me, that will be more confusing. I do understand that this was brought to us because of the safety of the children at the school. What I would like to do is concentrate on their safety and work with the school. I mean, what safety program do they have in place for school getting going and stopping? Do they cross in front of cars? You know, at, at what age do children get to wander by themselves? Is there an adult that can help children cross the street if they must? I think there's a lot of cars there when school gets out because most kids are getting into a car. I ask, I ask when this issue came to us before because it was in, in conjunction with an accident that had happened at some point in the past there. And, and they had said, and I can't remember because it's been a while since we discussed this, but they, over a certain time period, there were so many accidents there. And I had asked if we could be informed as what time of the day those accidents were happening. Because if it's related to the kids getting out of school, then maybe, maybe we have to look at a solution. But if it's related to maybe accidents happening because, for lack of better, maybe the bars are getting out. That, that has nothing to do with, with the school and the safety of the children because those are nighttime accidents. And those are happening because people do silly things. But I, I'm just not, I'm just not in favor of this. I'm in favor of keeping the kids safe, but looking at it in a different way than throwing money that we currently didn't plan to throw at it. That's, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
I think Chief Jet is not here and he can speak to the, the accidents that have been there at the intersection.
Yes, good evening. We just did some preliminary numbers. And what we just, we went back ten years. This is a nice round number. And what we're looking at in, in those ten years, we're looking at twenty-six accidents that occurred. Twelve of those resulted in injuries to some degree. And I know one that was fairly significant, and that involved an impaired driver, I believe on marijuana in that case. Just for a little bit of background, looking at the, the dates and the times, there's really no consistent pattern. I can tell you that the, that the latest accident that I, that I saw during that time period was roughly about, it looks like about seven thirty in the evening and the fall. That'd be November specifically. And the earliest, oh, let me strike that. I'm sorry, there was one at eight fifty-one PM. That was the latest that we can see right here, eight fifty-one in the evening. The earliest looks like it was probably roughly eight o'clock in the morning. There seemed to be really no pattern. They were spread out through different months. We had several, maybe a quarter of them happened during the more winter months, January, February. The rest were spring, right into summer and, and fall. So every, every season was pretty well represented there. I did not drill down as far as the details. I can do that for you if you'd like to see if there are pedestrian involved. Or which, if they were crossing the intersection from a certain way, that wouldn't be hard to do. I can, I can provide that for you also at a later date. I would be happy to do so. But that would be kind of a snapshot of what we looked at the last ten years. And Steve, do you recall when we changed the light out from, from a signal to a flashing, Amber?
We discussed that earlier this afternoon. We're, we were thinking in the, in the two thousand eleven, twelve timeframe is when it, when it went to that flash mode.
Okay, so what I could do also, I could actually go back another ten years prior to that if you'd like. And we could see what it would compare to a flashing light versus when we had a signal there, see if there's any significant difference. I can tell you that the average, well, in twenty-six accidents in ten years is going to be two point six accidents per year would be the average. The most, or the least we had would be one accident. In two thousand eleven. We had three accidents in two thousand twelve. Four in two thousand thirteen. Two accidents in two thousand fourteen. Three in two thousand fifteen. Two in two thousand sixteen, three in seventeen, jumping up to four in eighteen. Only one in two thousand nineteen, and then we've had three so far this year. And being that we're only a couple of weeks away from the end of the year, hopefully that'll be it. So, and I can print this out and send it mail it to each councilman. And council member, if you like, that's not a problem. Or if there's any other information you like, I'd be happy to get it for you. Hopefully that kind of gives a little bit of an overview.
Thank you, Chief Jet. I would I would like to see those numbers and I'd also like to know how many of those were actually involved a pedestrian.
I can look in for that, ma'am. That that won't be a problem.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, chief, I I agree. I I think the more we know. The more we know about the accidents at that intersection, the the better. The better decision that we can make. And if you wouldn't mind as well, if it's not too much trouble, I have no idea how much time this takes you. But I would be, I'd be interested in in the data prior to the light. Going to flash as well. And I I I just wanna, I wanna ask you a question and I'm only asking because. There was some data before and the data before had a. As as far as accidents goes, it said, it said within the vicinity. And what I'd like to do is I'd like to make sure, and so I'll ask you, did do the does the data that you just? That you just explained to us is that at that particular intersection only?
Well, again, sir, I'd have to actually pull the actual U D ten reports. That's the state reporting report for accidents or collisions as they're called. And so without physically pulling each report, that would be hard to say. The information I asked my my clerk, I said, give me the information for that intersection. So I would say it's gonna be involving that intersection. Turning or a signal or just a a stop sign would be my guess on that. But I need to stress, that's what it'd be right now, I guess. I can confirm that also. And then I can also look at M dot records to see if they have anything. For that, but. My guess, sir, would be it's gonna be related to the actual intersection, not not several hundred feet away or anything like that.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know. I didn't know what that meant in the vicinity. I didn't know if that if. But but I'm, but I guess what you're saying is that we can safely assume that that if they're. If they come up in a search for that intersection, then it must have someone's opinion must have been that it had that that intersection had something to do with the accident in the first place?
Yes, sir, it would, it would be that intersection related. So.
Okay, I and I guess I for the time, I I won't question someone's someone's. Professional assessment that the that the intersection had something to do with it. So I I don't wanna, I don't want to put you into having to pull every every individual case for the last. What what might now be 20 years, so. If you're if 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 you're confident that the intersection had something to do with that, I I'm okay with just leaving it at that, I guess.
Very good, sir, and and it's really no trouble. I can I can take a peek at tomorrow, see if we can pull up. It's really not that involved. It's just matter of putting the reports and and actually looking at the diagrams that the officer is. You know, indicate on the report.
Okay. All right, we will move to Councilman Noah.
I I being the third, I'm I'm seeing that we are all looking for additional information for pedestrian involvement. So I think that, you know, I'm looking for that, too. I want to understand exactly the types of accidents and so on. I don't think there's any one of us that wants to, you know, say that, you know, we don't want to do what's safely, but we have to, we have limited funds and we want to make sure that we're doing the right things. For the right reasons, that sometimes what happens is. We do, you know, change some things and we've we've heard from other traffic studies that when you. Change a light or add a light, you actually can cause more accidents at a light than you actually can reduce. I mean, so the severity can be reduced, but you know, sometimes it does increase the number of accidents. So it's just we have to get all of that information is, you know, I guess the bottom line, what I'm trying to say, so we can make a valued. You know, opinion of what we should do there, if anything.
Thank you. And I don't think there's a rush to this, to to deal with this tonight by any means, but. We'll continue with our dialogue to Amber Hess.
Yes, thank you, Councilwoman Hess. I I think, you know, it's always good to have more information to look at, but I also, I think I agree with the mayor. Councilwoman Johnson in that if we don't need to spend the money and it doesn't. To make it so it's gonna make it safer, we should look at that. I I drive the intersection most every day to and from work. And one thing that the current traffic. Pattern, I think, works pretty well is Mayor Wollinger pointed out, if someone's coming down Miller Street. If you just stop and there's one coming, which most of the time there isn't, if you're turning right towards town, you can just go. It keeps traffic flowing and and it seems to work. One thing that I feel is missing strongly, and this could be done very soon. Is that there could be a sign on Miller from each direction, cross traffic does not stop. Because that's not information the driver has. If you're not familiar with that intersection, you don't know that the cross traffic doesn't stop. You may think it's a four-way blinking red. It's not. It's yellow and red. Putting up those signs, I think, could immediately make it a safer intersection. And, you know, like Mayor Wollinger mentioned, possibly putting stop signs instead on Miller. That could be an option that would effectively do the same thing. However, if we're looking at possible. Construction down the road and we want to use that as a detour street, it had the option to change traffic patterns. Having the light there and being able to control it and making it. You know, more active just for during construction could be very useful. So since it's already there, I think just adding those signs, saying cross traffic on second does not stop. Would be make it safer and still allow for a good traffic flow. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Amber. That's a very good point. And before I go to Danny and I forget that she mentioned it. I I I want to bring that up to to Rachel and Steve, what your and perhaps Joel, what yours, what your take is on that sign. I I think that. I'd have to agree with Amber that everybody that comes up to that light on that flashing red light. If they're coming on Miller Street. May not be aware of what that what the Second Avenue light is doing. If you're brand new to that intersection, you don't know that it's if you might think it's flashing red like yours is. Is that something that you might consider in the interim?
We we can certainly talk about it. The the only thing is, is typically when all four legs stop. There usually is some sign that says four-way stop. So that's, that would be the only thing and it's 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 also, we refer to those signs as, you know, like a non-enforceable sign. It would be a black on yellow sign and it's. It's it's for information only, you know, it's not an enforceable sign that says, hey, you know, you saw the sign here, but you still went through the light or, you know, whatever. It's um, it's a, it would be a non-enforceable. And so it's a, it it sometimes like the children playing signs, things like that, they they give a little bit of a false sense of security with it. To somebody. So I mean, we can certainly talk about it internally and just see what. You know, look at some other applications and in other places and just see what.
Okay, I'll leave that to you guys.
Might add, I'm not, well, I think we're both saying we don't want to say four-way stop, but the information is valuable. The information is invaluable. If you come to that intersection and you don't know. People may not, if they may not be used always having a four-way stop sign. They may think it's a four-way stop. They may not, they don't have information that across, and I've seen all over the state and other states. Signs that simply, yes, it's just information, but it's very valuable information. Cross traffic does not stop, which you know, you have to, even after you stop, you can't just go. And and I'm guessing that could have been true in some of the accidents is that someone stopped, they thought it was their turn. Well, you don't have a turn when the cross traffic has a blinking yellow, not red. So I just want to emphasize that I think it's very valuable information that's not available to the Miller Street traffic right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Amber. And I will leave that to to staff to discuss. Amongst themselves and and come back and maybe just, if nothing else, let us know what your take is on that on that suggested sign. Councilman Mitchell.
Okay, the first question is. Were these lights cycling before? You said like twenty eleven, twenty twelve, okay. So the question would be, what were the accident rates when they were cycling?
Chief Jet's gonna look into that.
Right, well, I'm I'm talking, but this is before that period, not after. I was just kind of warning that. My thoughts are to install a four-way stop sign and identify it as a new traffic pattern. Reason I'm saying that is because of any crosswalking pedestrians coming from the church or going to the church and school, the whole thing like this. If it's a four-way stop, they're gonna have to stop, thus increasing the safety for the pedestrians crossing over. It is a way also of kind of controlling the speed in that area as well, putting in a four-way stop. It's a lot less expensive to have stop signs than new lights. That's how I see it.
Okay, thank you, Danny. Um, so what I'm what I'm hearing is that we're going to more than likely postpone a decision for this. Topic until Chief Jet can provide us with the information he's been asked. Joel, do you have a, do you have a particular time?
I can, I can probably have it to you for the next meeting, but just a thought that I had here, please just be be aware that. These reports are are detailed in many ways, but in some ways, they will not always. In the narrative, which is a very short area to write. It may not indicate that the actual cause. Or how the accident happened. They'll say that the driver disregarded the signal or the or the stop sign. But it it it's probably not going to indicate that the driver indicated that he was confused or didn't know what to do. So that information will probably not be there and I'm I'm hearing a lot of discussion about those type of issues. And we simply may not have that information. They're usually a little bit more black and white. They're gonna say that the. Vehicle driver vehicle one failed to yield for the oncoming traffic and a collision occurred. Sometimes it's that matter of fact. And so we may not have more of the. In-depth, the the hows and the whys and something like this. So I just, I'm just kind of throwing that out there as full disclosure.
Yeah, that's, I I understand. I think everyone. Everyone heard you and understands. But I I think it still warrants us kind of taking a look at the numbers. To be honest with you, I'm not so sure that it's really gonna change my opinion on on how the intersection should be set up and and I agree with. The mayor Protem that perhaps even assisting the school in some way of of. Of educating their children on on how to cross safely, whether there's a light there or not. Might be something that we can look into, so. I think everyone would agree that we can perhaps postpone this until. The. You know, and it's really, Steve, is there a, is there? Is there, are you under a time crunch of any kind? I mean, I I know Joel's looking to get this back by our next meeting, but we're really talking about, there's only like two or three workdays in there. Are you okay if we push this out to the nineteenth?
Oh, that's fine. Yeah, yeah.
I would, I I'd suggest that if everybody's, if somebody's okay with that, unless you're in a hurry to get it back up on the fourth.
Oh, yeah, it it won't hurt my feelings if we wait till the nineteenth.
I just think so. The other thing is too is, you know, I I like the suggestions of working with the schools and I know that we have got. You know, we used to have crossing guards over at Ella White. I mean, I don't know if there's any volunteer crossing guards that could work with. School if there is concerns at that particular intersection, but I mean, that would be something that I'd like to maybe discuss with the school as well, just to see if there's anything that we can. Help with there or if there's anything we have to do to allow something like that. Maybe Joe has some information on that as well.
Well, a crossing guard is a whole other matter. And that's something that the city at Ella White. Has taken on that burden as far as that financial burden for many, many years. There's has been discussions about renegotiating that with the school to see if they would be willing to help offset the costs for that program. By statute, we are charged with training the person. And but the city over the years has also taken on that financial burden of of the crossing guard. So just be be aware that if we, you know, there is a cost involved under the current program. Or arrangement, I might say. Yes, you're welcome. All right, I'll entertain a motion to postpone this topic until January nineteenth.
Mayor Protem, well. No, Mike said it. I'll second.
All right.
Hess, yes.
Mayor Protem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noah, yes.
Mayor, hi.
Ocean Carriage.
All right, thank you. Next up is the sewer main analytical tool recommendation from Rich Selinger.
Sorry, just getting everything turned on here. As part of the Safe Drinking Water Act, the state of Michigan required us to submit an asset management plan for our existing utility system. As a portion of the report pertains to the conditions of the existing sanitary lines throughout the city. Sue, as the utilities, the city's utility contractor. Has explored various options for completing this project and are recommending the S L rat system from InfoSense. The system utilizes radar to inspect the sewer lines, looking for obstructions or locations which may need to be repaired. Right now, for us to be able to go out and do inspect those lines. We have to send the the factor out, they jet rod and clean the sanitary sewer main. Then we. Send the camera up there, very slow and time-consuming process. At best, just just cleaning, a good example is it takes us six years to do a complete clean of the city. Because we can only operate in the summer, but. Every six years, every piece of sewer main is cleaned, not not necessarily inspected, but cleaned. Sue has requested and received quotes from InfoSense for the S L rat system in the amount of twenty six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars. Quote includes some additional equipment to keep the system running efficiently and a half day of training for the personnel who will be operating the system. Because it is new technology, InfoSense is currently the only, the sole source for this system. Mike Lewinsky, who is on the line and I'll ask him to provide some comments here in a few minutes. Supports the purchase for the attached memo. Funding was established in the sewer fund, the amount of twenty thousand dollars for this equipment. The additional six thousand three hundred and thirty dollars can be reallocated short term from the proposed lift station telemetry project. As additional funding is already being requested in the twenty one through twenty seven CIP. For the completion of the lift station telemetry. Therefore, it is my recommendation to city engineer that we issue a purchase order to InfoSense. For the purchase of the S L rat system for the quoted quoted amount of twenty six three thirty. And Mike, Mike Lewinsky and his company does have experience. With this equipment, so Mike, if you're on, would you please provide any comments?
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. It's kind of a unique piece of equipment. It's very easily set up. It's upstream manhole, downstream manhole, there's a transmitter and a receiver. Um, it's upstream manhole, downstream manhole. There's a transmitter and a receiver of the radar signal. And the strength of that signal tells you the percent that the line is obstructed. Um, in order to do that with a camera, it would take us probably a full day. Um, we've, we've, Sue has used this product for the last two years out east on Long Island. And, uh, one project Nassau County is a very, very large county. Um, they were able to reduce the number of sewer overflows that they had and backups into homes by seventy to eighty percent. Uh, the tool allows us to get GPS locations for the manholes. It also allows us to store the information that's collected as far as the, uh, the percent obstruction of the sewer. And, uh, I think it'd be a valuable tool for, for us to use, not only as a diagnosis, diagnostic tool, but it also provides us information that we can put into the, the computer system that the city has for maintaining the sewer lines. And the biggest thing, uh, technology, I, I, I just became aware of it, um, last year. I believe it's only about two years old.
And, and as Mike, in, in my, my memo, it, uh, indicates, this is really being driven by the Safe Drinking Water Act. We've had a lot of new regulations, requirements coming down the pike on the utilities as far as, uh, identifying the assets that you have, identifying the condition of those assets. Um, you know, a lot of communities have not been reinvesting into their infrastructure system like the city of Alpena has for the last, uh, many years. A lot of, a lot of communities are just letting it go to pieces, and, uh, they're having a lot more failures and, and backups in their system. So this, you know, part of these requirements are to keep those people in check. But it is a requirement that we do have to comply with.
The other advantage is we have a, a list of sewer mains that we maintain twice a year because they've had a history of backing up. Um, and that's the only reason why we do it twice a year, because we want to avoid, uh, sewers from getting into people's homes and potentially causing significant damage. This tool will allow us to check those lines to see if they actually do need cleaning. And if they, if they are not obstructed, we're wasting our time cleaning them twice a year. So I think, I think that's, that would be another value for this tool. It would allow us to concentrate our time on sewers that actually do need cleaning as opposed to just cleaning them because we're afraid they may back up and we don't necessarily have, uh, a significant problem there.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just a quick comment is like I was asking our city manager and, uh, pass it along to Rich and Mike. Just I did have some, some questions on, uh, if there was any alternatives to this tool. I understand you answered that, that you have experience with this, or your company does at least. Um, I guess the prevention of that sewer backup says always one of the nicest things about any of those type of services. And it sounds like there's gonna be quite a reduction in cost that we're currently doing in cleaning out those lines. I won't say unnecessarily, but, uh, it doesn't totally eliminate us cleaning li- lines because it sounds like that's part of our regular maintenance, uh, where, where we have a regular rotation of doing that. Um, but, uh, is there any, with the newer technology, is there anything that you guys are concerned about with this technology at all? And can you basically get like a map of the city in a quick amount of time? In other words, if you've got areas of the city you want to check quickly, I'm assuming you can cut your time almost in half.
Like I said, we'll, we will be able to, um, download that information that we collect right there on site and, and put it into the city system. So, you know, there's a, a big advantage there. Um, I think the ma- the major thing that I see is that the significant reduction in the number of damage claims that you have. And we don't really have a, a significant problem in Alpena, but when you do have a problem, um, certainly the person's home that it affects is, thinks it's a very big problem, and it can, can be costly.
Yeah, very much so. So, okay, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mike. Um, you're welcome. Answers the questions that I had as well. Uh, thank you both, Mikes and Rich. Uh, um, any other questions, uh, Mayor Pro Temp? Do you have any questions or concerns?
Nothing. Thank you.
So, woman has?
I just have a question. Um, the camera, um, the robotic camera that's driven down the line, is that, is that something that the city owns? Or is that something we contracted to have done?
Uh, we, we bought that, and Mike, uh, you may have to help me out, but how many years ago did we buy that camera?
I want to say it's probably close to ten years old now.
Okay, I was thinking that we had one, that, you know, to use, but I, yeah, so it's been quite a while since we've had it. It's not something we bought a year ago.
No, we've, we've, we've used it extensively, and, um, it, it does go on vacation occasionally back to its home for a little repair work.
It's, it's, uh, used in extreme conditions, and like Rich says, we do have to send that in for maintenance periodically.
Sure, okay, well, um, yeah, I think, you know, I think the, the new technology sounds promising for identifying where there's really problems and making sure we target our attention to those areas. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You, Amber. Um, Councilman Mitchell?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't have any, uh, either. Sounds like a good plan to me. Everything that was stated sounds a good plan. All right, um, entertain a motion to approve that purchase.
Councilman Noak, I move we approve the purchase of the SL RAT and accessories in the amount of twenty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars.
Johnson, second. Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Algora?
Mayor, I?
And Councilwoman Has?
Has, yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you, gentlemen. Uh, Rich is gonna stay here for a minute for a water treatment plant filters, filters valves, five through seven materials bid recommendation.
On December eighth, uh, twenty twenty, the city received an open bids for the materials portion, the water treatment plant filters five through seven valve repair project. This project replaces fifteen valves and actuators on filters five through seven in the water recycling plant. The materials award is the first of the two-part bid for this project, with the additional bids being received for the installation of the materials today. Bid documents were sent to ten suppliers, plan rooms, and also posted on the city's website with five proposals received as follows. Uh, Hamlet Engineering, eighty-five thousand, one hundred and eighty-two. Harrington Process Solutions, sixty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-seven cents. Michigan Pipe and Valve, ninety-three thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. The McComb Group, fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-seven cents. I mean, we did have one bid that was received after the two P M deadline. We'd already started, uh, reviewing the bid, so that bid was rejected. That was from Alpena Supply. Funding has been established to the amount of a hundred and forty thousand in the water fund for the completion of the project, with a hundred thousand allocated for the materials. Um, the, the materials bid, um, as seen above, is the, just under fifty-five thousand. Today, we did open the bids for the installation portion. Uh, they're still being reviewed, but the low bid received was about thirty, just under thirty-four thousand. So we're gonna be well within our budget number, uh, to be able to accomplish this. After extensive review of the proposal by both city, um, and Sue's staff, it was determined the proposed materials from the McComb Group met the proposed specification. As part of the proposal, the city also requested optional prices for a manual override of the valves in the event of a failure of the normal operating systems. The override would allow the plant to continue to operate and produce water. It was originally anticipated the cost of the valves, actuators, and for the controlling valves, and the manual override system would be a significant expense. For this reason, the override was priced separately, allowing for their inclusion if the budget allowed. Due to the lower than anticipated price from the McComb Group, this system is now within our budget and well worth the additional cost of the ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-two cents for all fifteen overrides to have the ability to continue water production if the pneumatic actuator system goes down. It is my recommendation to city engineer to issue a purchase order to the McComb Group for the water treatment plant filters, what, five through seven valve materials for the base bid of fifty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-seven cents. And for the op- optional manual overrides in the amount of ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty-one dollars and fifty-two cents, totaling sixty-five thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars, ninety, so, ninety-nine cents. And as I indicated, uh, the installation bids we receive were, were just under thirty-four, so we're gonna be just under a hundred thousand dollars with this project. We have a hundred and forty thousand dollars budgeted.
Gotta love a lot of multiple bidders, don't we? You knew I was gonna comment on it.
The, the one thing, uh, and I know that there was a question that was raised here today, um, um, ages of the existing valves. Those valves that were replaced, the valves and actuators are from our nineteen sixty-five vintage when that, when the filter gallery five through seven was added on to the, to the water plant. So we've gotten fifty-five years of service out of those existing valves. There's no reason, uh, with these new valves and actuators that we shouldn't see a very similar lifespan.
Rich, on the, on the, um, I'm not sure what you call it, and I guess it's the bidder list with, uh, and it says addendum number one, and there's a check mark by each one of them. Is that, is that indicating that they bid on the, on the additional manual overrides?
No, we, we issued an addendum to the bid to add some additional information. And that check mark just acknowledges that they, uh, as a bidder, did acknowledge that they did receive that addendum number one.
Oh, I gotcha. Okay. Um, and I, assuming I'm gonna ask it because it's probably, it was probably on a lot of people's minds when they saw the significant difference between some of the bid numbers, um, assuming that, that, uh, I mean, you're recommending, uh, the low bid, even though it's, um, significantly less than the, the two top bids. You're, you have no issue with the product that you're gonna get from the McComb Group? Everything specked out good? Any, any experience with their product, or?
Shannon, Shannon and, uh, Mike Collins from the water plant both had extensive conversations with the representative from the McComb, McComb Group. He sent along product literature along with his bid that was reviewed, and they both, uh, Mike Collins, who has to operate it and work with it on a daily basis, uh, felt very comfortable with their, with the equipment that they were proposing, and it did meet spec.
Thank you, sir. I don't have any other issues. Um, anyone else? I'll just, I'll just let you chime in. Other council members, any issues or questions for Rich?
None here, sir.
None here.
None.
I move we approve the purchase of, uh, plant filters, five through seven valves for a base bid of fifty-four, eight ninety-two and forty-seven cents, and the manual overrides in the amount of ten thousand, seven fifty-one and fifty-two cents to the McComb Group.
Mitchell, support. Mitchell, I, yes.
Noak, yes.
Mayor Algora?
Mayor, I?
Councilwoman Has?
Has, yes.
And Mayor Pro Temp Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
Motion carried.
Record reflect that Councilman Mitchell tried the I out for a change.
I caught that.
Mayor, I, what the heck?
Hey, um, I'm just gonna make a quick statement before we, um, before we perhaps go into closed session that it, for anybody that's on the call or the media that, um, this looks like it could take a specific, uh, particularly long time, but we will be returning to open session with the possibility of taking some action on the collective bargaining agreement. So, um, so we will be logging back on. Um, I'm going to go out on a limb and assume for media that the city manager has a, has a, um, has a, some details to, to probably put out to the media as soon as they're approved.
Well, correct.
All right. Thank you very much. And with that, I will, uh, entertain the motion, um, to move into closed session that Bill had forwarded us.
This is Mayor Pro Temp Johnson. I move we go into closed session to consult with the city attorney regarding, regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with specific pending litigation being Courier LLC and Schultz versus the city of Alpena, um, in Alpena County Circuit Court. Because an open meeting would have a detrimental financial effect on the litigation or settlement, um, position of the city. Um, and to go, and to discuss collective bargaining as well.
Councilman Noak, support.
Councilman Noak?
Councilman Noak, yes.
Mayor Algora?
Mayor, I?
Councilwoman Has?
Has, yes.
Mayor Pro Temp Johnson?
Johnson, yes.
And Councilman Mitchell?
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
We are adjourned to closed session.
Be all over there.
Is anyone able to advance the screen so it's not showing that we're in closed session? Rachel, are you able to do that?
That's Steve.
Yeah, that's from Steve.
Steve Schultz is on there. Can you do that, Steve?
I don't think he's actually there. He leaves it on and it records and then he goes back and edits out the time that we were in closed session. So it just flows smoothly.
I think he's the only one that can.
Yeah.
There's Amber.
I accidentally first tried to log. We just left.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the contract. Anna, you can do the wording if you want so you get the right contract on there. Please come in.
So moved Johnson.
Second, Noak. Now look at the camera.
Mayor Olagora.
May I?
Councilwoman Hess.
Hess, yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson, yes.
Councilman Mitchell.
Councilman Mitchell, yes.
And Councilman Noak.
Councilman Noak, yes.
Motion carried.
Councilman Noak, I'm move adjourned.
Johnson, second.
Adjourned.
Good night all. Happy holidays.
Bye. Bye.